Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize for the short delayed start. New technical difficulties getting worked out, so I call out of recess Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petition twenty-one P fifteen ninety-one. GSG Wind LLC's request for a special use permit to construct a wind energy conversion system within Lee County, within Lee Center, sublet and West Brooklyn Townships. If somehow you're listening to this and can't remember or find how to log into the Zoom and want to get onto the Zoom meeting but can't find that information, the Zoom meeting ID is nine one five three nine two three nine one five four. And the password to get into that Zoom meeting is two zero nine eight four zero. If, on the other hand, you don't want to, you don't want to be on Zoom, you want to just watch and listen to us on YouTube on your computer or cell phone, use your browser, go to W W W dot YouTube dot com. In the search bar, type Lee County, ill short for Illinois, zoning board of appeals. Don't worry about upper lowercase letters. Find the session date you want, which presumably tonight, June sixteenth. Click on that and you should be seeing and listening to us with a short time delay. I note the presence tonight in the courtroom of all honorable members of the Lee County ZBA Chairman Forster, Vice Chairman Burrow, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Pratt and Mr. Meyer. Honorable Dee Duffy, zoning officers present, as is her able assistant, Alice Batwoman Hinkle. State's attorney is here by his assistant, Bridget Schott. Mr. Berry, attorney for the petitioner, GSG Wind is present. I don't see any other interested parties unless I'm missing someone in the courtroom. I think the heat probably kept everybody away. Our IT department is present, as is our able court reporter and of course himself. When we left off last, the production of evidence had been completed, as had any closing statements, public comments. And tonight was the first night scheduled for fact, the board's fact finding and recommendations. I don't think there's any other housekeeping. With no further ado, the floor is open for motions, gentlemen.
Let's begin with the first draft number one. Motion being the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing after ZBA or zoning board finds that on March three, two thousand twenty-two, GSG Wind LLC, hearing after GSG applicant, petitioner, developer, or Leeward. What is referred to as a indirect subsidiary of Leeward Renewable Energy LLC filed a petition with the Lee County Zoning Administration Office, which was indexed twenty-two dash P dash one five nine one, requesting a special use permit to decommission nineteen existing wind turbine generators herein after W T G and construct euphemism repower up to sixteen new W T Gs with associated infrastructure in order to operate an up to one hundred and ten megawatt, increasing the present capacity from eighty megawatt wind energy conversion system herein after W E C S wind farm project facility or development on sixty possible parcels of real estate of approximately three thousand two hundred and seventy-five plus acres owned by twenty-nine different entities and zoned Ag One Rural Agriculture within Brooklyn, Lee Center and sublet townships. And while not pertinent to the facts found and recommendations made here in parts of LaSalle County, consisting of what could be broken into three different, not always contiguous units that for the descriptive purposes of this report will be referred to as the sublet West Brooklyn and Mendota sections. Using the nearest encompassing roadways as a reference, these three sections may generally be described as follows. The sublet section is bounded on the north by Richardson Road, on the south by Tower Road, connected to US Route fifty-two by Inlet Road, on the west by Greenwing Road, and on the east by South Meridian Road extended. The West Brooklyn section is notably smaller and consists of roughly one roughly triangular parcel laying outside the Easterly curve of Illinois Route two fifty-one at Spur Road and another parcel at the northeast corner of the intersection of Illinois Route two fifty-one and Shady Oaks Road. The Mendota section's Lee County portion is bounded on the, bounded on the north by Cottage Hill Road, extended on the south by North Forty-Eighth Road, also at, at least at that point, the Lee, LaSalle County border. On the, on the west by the combination of East First and Brooklyn Roads and on the east by Church Road. Subsequently, on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, an amended position, petition, excuse me, adding a request for a variance was filed. In the testimony it subsequently presented, one of the agents noted that the parcel number nineteen dash twenty-two dash zero five dash four hundred dash zero one one identified in the amended petition was erroneously included therein, and there would be no evidence presented that it was a part of the proposed development, that being the motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. With regard to your own motion, Mr. Hughes, any comments you want to make?
No, sir.
Any other board member wish to address the motion?
I would.
Yes, sir.
On line six.
I'm sorry.
On line six.
Let me get up to it. Line, oops, sorry.
At the end of the line, it says construct euphemism repower up to sixteen. I think the testimony was actually thirteen to sixteen wind generators that that would be up to. It's still correct, but I think it should be reflected that the actual testimony was thirteen to sixteen.
Is that a motion to amend?
I move to amend the motion by putting in thirteen to sixteen instead of up to sixteen.
Right here, a second to Mr. Meyer's motion.
Okay.
Got a second. Anything you want to say about your motion, other than what you've already said?
I think I said it.
Okay. Any other board member want to address it? I'll put the question, the question being put is whether to allow, whether to amend the motion to replace the word up with word or the numbers thirteen. The vote, all those, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion carries. Okay, now, you have, you have an amended motion on the floor. Anything you want to say about that amended motion that you haven't already said, Mr. Meyer?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of motion as so ably read by Mr. Hughes, with the exception that in the sixth line, the word up is being replaced by the num, the numerals thirteen, one, three. All those, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion carries. All right, we got one under our belt. Next, anybody?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a, a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that following the submission of the initial petition, proper notice of the filing of the petition and of an impending ZBA hearing was published in the Amway News, the Mendota Reporter, the South Valley News, all on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. And furthermore, United States Postal Service certified mailings of the same notice were sent to adjacent real estate property owners who would be within twenty-six hundred and forty feet, one half mile of the proposed project's boundary. And zoning administrator Dee Duffy published the hearing information on her department's pages of Lee County website and physically posted the same where the proposed development would be located.
All right, I have that as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so ably read by Mr. Pratt. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice. Opposed in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. And I forgot to do this to the last one, so just give me a minute before we. I would move on up. Oops. Okay, back open for business.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Number three, the motion reads, Lee County ZBA finds, the impending hearing was initially announced by Chairman Bruce Forster on the evening of Thursday, April seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at about six PM in the main courtroom on the third floor of the old Lee County Courthouse. And under the authority provided by its own rules, prior to actually initiating the hearing, the ZBA engaged the services of Tim Slaven, a retired circuit court judge, as the facilitator for the proceedings. And due to ZBA time constraints, Judge Slavens simply introduced himself, gave remarks explaining the process, gathered future available dates and set the next session for April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. On April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, by agreement of the petitioner and the county, the matter was continued in open session to the evening of Wednesday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, beginning at seven PM.
I take that as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer, about your own motion?
No, sir.
Any other board member want to address it? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion is so ably read by Mr. Meyer, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Excuse me, I'm having a hard time finding the mouse. Is there the cursor? Hard to find this Duffy's mouse cursor. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Burrow.
I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that the first stage of public hearings regarding the petition for special use permit was for your Lee County ZBA to accept testimony, their arguments and receive public comments. And as noted above, the actual evidentiary and comments portion of the hearing began on May fourth, twenty twenty-two, and it was concluded on May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, consisting of three sessions, all beginning at seven PM in the former main courtroom of the third floor of the old Lee County Courthouse. The totality of these sessions of the first stage comprised in total approximately six and one quarter hours of hearing time.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Got one, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so ably read by Mr. Burrow, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Another one unanimously adopted. Okay, next.
I'd make the motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that over the course of the first stage, everyone, the petitioner and interested parties were giving, given a complete and fair opportunity to be heard. Each was given the chance to present evidence, including witnesses and exhibits, cross-examine the witnesses of others and to present a closing argument, statement or public comment, either orally or in writing.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Got it, anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as recited by Mr. Hughes, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is equally adopted. All right, onward and upward.
Your honor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pratt.
Make a motion that we, the members of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, find that we heard or read all of the evidence produced and examined each of the exhibits. That's my motion.
All right, second?
Second.
Got a second, anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member?
Yes, just the grammatical one, remove the S off of finds. I think, I think Mike read it properly, but it's.
You're absolutely correct. Remind me of my first grade teacher. All right, any other? Board member, anyone say anything? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether on the adoption of the motion, whether we, the members, the members of Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals find that we heard or read all of the evidence produced and examined each of the exhibits, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. This vote will also be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. First and ten.
I move.
I mean this.
The Lee County ZBA finds throughout the hearing process, no longer were there any state of Illinois or Lee County COVID-nineteen safety measures in place for public gatherings such as the ZBA hearing, but attendees were encouraged to wear masks and maintain reasonable social distance within the hearing room, and there were never more than seven interested parties that personally appeared within the hearing room. And additionally, through the auspices of the Lee County IT Department and Lee County zoning officer, Ms. D Duffy, interested parties were also given the opportunity to remotely and virtually participate in the process by video or teleconferencing on the Zoom platform through the use of a computer, cell phone or similar device at a location of their choosing. And there, there was never more than one interested party that availed themselves of that protocol. And furthermore, interested parties could remotely view and listen to the proceedings in real time or later in the recorded mode on a YouTube feed, also courtesy of the Lee County IT Department and Ms. Duffy. And lastly, the entire, the entirety of the proceedings was taken down by a certified shorthand reporter and subsequently transcribed. Those transcripts of all the testament, testimony, arguments, public comments in the ZBA debate were and continue to be available on the zoning and planning web pages of the Lee County website. That's my motion.
Got it, wait here a sec, excuse me, a second, heard a second. Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion just so accurately read by Mr. Meyer, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Unlike the Cubs, that one's a winner. Ouch. Okay, but that didn't say much for my White Sox either, so.
Mr. Chairman, on point number eight, I move that Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that nine people took the witness stand placed under oath or affirmation and testified. Those witnessed in the general order of their appearance with a very brief summary of what they had to say were as follows. Mr. John Weckerly, offered by the petitioner, is its vice president of development, focusing on wind energy. He has fifteen years of experience in renewable energy projects, six of them over the past six years with Leeward. On behalf of the company committed to being bound by all representations made in the application and statements made under oath by representatives of the, of that entity during the ZBA hearing. He went on to give a general overview of the proposed repower whacks, the big picture of its physical footprint, generally the proposed equipment to be installed and its lifespan, and executed AMA, interconnections, the creation of a decommissioning plan, references to environmental noise, shadow flicker, property values, archaeological and communication studies and surveys, possible scheduling, a one hundred, a one eight hundred phone hotline to receive and respond to complaints, some of the ways in which the applicant will meet the requirements of other provisions of the Lee County ordinance to benefits to Lee County and explored the requested variances. Mr. Terry Vandywall, offered by the petitioner, a principal biologist with Stan Tech with twenty-nine years of environmental consulting under his belt, provided more details about any possible environmental issues addressed, such things as US Geological Services National Land Cover Database, the National Wetlands Inventory, and Illinois Department of Natural Resources, parentheses, IDNR, equal back, equal catch, review and subsequent consultation letter with recommendations, interaction with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, the three-tiered approach to the site characterization pro, process and an outline of possible impacts on a state or federally listed species. Dr. Peter Paletti, offered by the petitioner, is a real estate appraiser, holding top destinations from their appraisal institute and is an Illinois township assessor. He has been evaluating the effects of wind energy projects on property values since two thousand and seven. He'll find that no one can find, he'll find that he can find no significant differences, statistically, significant differences between property values in and around wind farms and those of the same area that are not. Mr. Ian Brewer, offered by the petitioner, is a section manager in environmental studies for Burns and McDonald, a multi-disciplined engineering firm, who represents the results of the modeled sound study he oversaw for the proposed repower project using the manufacturer's data for the GE three point four dash one forty model W T G. Mr. Brewer testified that of all the proposed locations, met that, testified that of all the proposed locations, this, it met the Illinois Police Control Board's nighttime noise standards for non-participating receptors at all frequencies, although some required noise reduction operation modifications to do so. He also allowed that the manufacturer's data for the possibly larger W T Gs were not available at the time of the study, that recognized that before installation of any of those turbines, that data would have to be published, would be used in a subsequent modeling study to ensure I P C B conformity. As Ella Rose, offered by the petitioner, is a professional engineer and consulting manager for renewable energy projects for Burns and McDonald, first represented the results of the shadow flicker modeling study at five hundred and twelve receptors within the proposed repower projects per view. She also allowed that the study was performed using manufacturer's data, the GE three point four dash one forty W T G model, as it was the only information presently available. She said that of the non-participating receptors, one would exceed the Lee County ordinance limit of thirty annual hours of flicker and ten would receive between ten and thirty hours. She believed that the owner of the one exceedance property was going to sign a waiver agreement. In addition, Ms. Rose briefly touched on the decommissioning plans for the existing W T Gs. She said the developer was considering both the energetic or tilt fell methods and desired to leave the existing underground cabling in place. Mr. Carter Wells is the head developer for G C G's wind proposed repower project. He touched on a number of factors, of facts, according to show conformity with the sections of Lee County ordinance such as vibration, pollution, odors, electromagnetic radiation, fire explosions, toxic, noxious and hazardous materials, glare and heat. He also allowed that there was no, that there was or would be, excuse me, he also allowed there was or would be executed impacted permits with any non-participants whose receptors would experience more than thirty hours of annual, annual hours of shadow flicker. He also, he acknowledged that there would be no current executed waivers for property owners on whose land the G S G wind desired to leave any underground cables in place. He finished by promising that the applicant would follow any Lee County ordinance setbacks, no matter the W T G model employed, and that will be bound by any and all proposals, promises, statements and representations in its application for a S U P or made under oath at the public hearing before the Lee County ZBA, even if not expressly specified herein or therein. On being recalled to the witness stand in a subsequent session, Mr. Wells explained that the G S G wind was requesting that as part of its request, the S U P, to be able to take down the existing W T Gs either by the tilt fell or energetic method. He also noted that a parcel identified in the petition, precedent petition, as being part of the proposed project number nineteen dash twenty-two dash zero five dash four hundred dash zero one one was erroneously included and has no connection to the requested S U P, and that a contiguous parcel, number nineteen dash twenty-two dash zero five dash four hundred dash zero one three is included in the petition only because it has an existing underground transmission and communication line easement running along its southern border. Ms. Abigail Bookchuck, a licensed professional engineer and senior consultant for Sergeant and London, an engineering consultant firm, explained that the three methods of W T G decommissioning, energetic, tilt fell and reverse build, and her recommendations to the applicant based on crew safety, lesser land impact, cost and time, that the W T Gs be removed by the energetic protocol. She also outlined her modeled noise and vibration impacts of that method on nearby residences, recommending eleven-foot buffer zone. She further noted that there were three residents within the proposed cushion, but that one was one thousand eighty-six feet, which was fourteen feet shy of her suggestion, and the other two, about eight hundred seventy-five feet, were primary structures of participating landlords. Mr. Bruce Babbage explained that he owns a parcel of property on which is located a W T G unrelated to this G S G wind petition, but which also the survey in the state of an easement for a transmission and communication line, which is part of the existing project, and apparently its repower. He went on to complain about his perception that the applicant was asking to rezone his parcel and implied, politely admonished there would be no confusion between the promissory land and use and perimeters of what exists and what he has agreed will exist. Ms. Lorraine Catral, a homeowner living within the footprint of the existing G S G wind development, testified by, testified about her research and the internet reports of others into real estate values as the same are diminished by nearby W T Gs. That is my motion.
Yeah, do I hear a second? Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member?
Yes, I think just, this would be probably just a semantic clarification under the portion about Mr. Ian Brewer. miss, the portion about Mr. Ian Brewer. Think it'd be the fourth line, yes, but, proposed locations. Yeah, um, testified that all of the proposed locations met, uh, the fir- first word of the fifth line. I would change that to would meet Illinois Pollution Control Board's nighttime noise, noise standards rather than met.
I'll take that as a friendly suggest, friendly amendment. Would you accept that, Mr. Um, Earl?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Any other board member besides Mr. Hughes? Any other comments, Mr. Hughes?
No.
I will then put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the long motion read by Mr. Burrow. Um, adoption, that motion is, um, requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Motion carries. Better up.
Moving on to draft number nine. The Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the following exhibits were admitted into evidence by facilitator and considered by the board. Petitioners exhibits. At number one, hard copy of witness John Weckerly's, Weckerly's PowerPoint presentation. At number two, hard copy of witness Terry Van De Wall's PowerPoint presentation. At number three, hard copy of witness Ian Brewer's PowerPoint presentation. At number four, hard copy of witness Ella Rose's PowerPoint presentation. At number five, hard copy of witness Abigail Bookta's PowerPoint presentation. Interested party exhibits. IP number one, a compilation of seventy-four pages from Bruce Pappich, which includes a GIS satellite view of his property and two thousand and five, two thousand and six, and two thousand and seven lease agreements with amendments there too. IP number two, six pages from Lorraine Catrell, consisting of one page, one-page list of property addresses and a year's sales prices and five pages of internet sourced material regarding diminished VAT, uh, real estate values and WTGs.
We're here a second.
Second.
Got it. Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the motion as, um, recited by Mr. Hughes. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is allowed as well. Gents.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that following the close of the testimonials phase, the board heard what could be categorized as closing arguments or public comment from Mr. Kyle Berry, attorney for the applicant, who urged based on the evidence produced showing the proposed conformity with the Lee County ordinance, that the Lee County ZBA recommend to the Lee County Board that GSG Wind LLC's petition should be approved, special use permit issued and requested variances granted. Ms. Lorraine Catrell voiced that the evidence regarding the effect of one or more nearby WTG showed a diminu- diminu- diminution of residential property values and that therefore the pending petition should be denied. Ms. Mary Mock questioned the petitioner's expert evidence that there was no effect on property values near a wind farm and urged that the pending petition be denied. The motion.
Okay, we're here a second.
Second.
Hearing one, I asked Mr. See, was it Mr. Pratt? Um, any comments on your motion? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Pratt, and I should mention, I should have mentioned on each one and displayed on the board in the courtroom and on and a Zoom, uh, screen share. Uh, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That takes care of that one. Okay, guys, back to it.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Number eleven, I move Lee County ZBA finds, according to both its application and the testimony of its agents, the proposed repowered WEX located partly in Lee County and partly in LaSalle County would be an enhancement of the existing and operating GSG wind farm, which was Lee County permitted in two thousand and three and began operation in two thousand and seven. This enhancement would be a result of technology advancements allowing that a WTG to produce more energy and reduce operational costs with less noise and lower wind speeds.
I hear a second.
Aye.
Got a second. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether Lee County ZBA finds that according to both its application and the testimony of its agents, proposed repowered WEX located partly in Lee County and partly in LaSalle County would be an enhancement of the existing and operating GSG wind farm, which was Lee County permitted in two thousand and three and began operating in two thousand and seven. The enhancement would be the result of technology advancements allowing a WTG to produce more energy at reduced operational costs with less noise at lower speeds. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries that motion. Okay, guys.
Mr. Chairman, moving on to point twelve, I move that Lee County ZBA finds that through both its application and the testimony of one or more of its agents, that the basic components of the WEX would be up to sixteen new WTGs consisting in of an array of one or more of the following makes and models. General Electric, three point four dash one forty, three point six dash one fifty-four, Siemens, the Mesa, Renewable Energy, three point one dash one twenty-nine, Vestas, B one ten, B one fifty. That as to dimensions, the present WTGs are eighty meters in height and their proposed replacement of WTGs would be plus or minus one hundred and five meters tall. The present blade swept area would be a diameter of eighty-seven meters and the proposed WEX WTGs would have a swept area of a hundred and forty meters in diameter. And that to power, that as to power capacity output, the present WTGs are all two megawatts. And depending on the make and model, the proposed replacement WTGs would range from three point four to four point five megawatt output capacity. Existing collection line upgrades or modifications and new access roads and foundation areas and temporary access road markings and potential modifications to the existing operations and maintenance O and M building and creating an approximately twenty-acre temporary construction laydown yard on ground straddling Lee and LaSalle counties and construction of a new or modification to an existing meteorology, meteorologist tower. The use of two existing points of inter- interconnection. It's motion.
You're second.
Second.
Got a second. Mr. Bro, anything you want to say about your own, your own, I'm sorry, your own motion?
No, thanks.
Mr. Meyer, you can't wait to say that you want to make a friendly motion to say, rather than up to, you would like to say.
I would like to say thirteen to sixteen, but also I'd like to point out that the motion does point out how few specifics we did get from the petitioner on the number of generators, the models of the generator, or the specific location where each generator was going to be.
Mr. Bro, would you first of all, accept the friendly amendment to change the word up to the, to the Arabic numerals one, three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Meyer, anything you want? I, I didn't mean to cut you off. Anything you want to expand on the?
Nope, I, I think I said what I meant.
Any other board member?
Just a friendly one as well, um. After that adds to dimensions, the first line, the WTGs, um, probably put a small um, S after replacement WTGs.
Yep. We're not even going to call that a motion because that's just.
Well, I just.
That's just a typo. Yep, done.
Nothing else.
Okay, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put, uh, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the motion as, uh, read by Mr. Bro and displayed here in the courtroom, on the board and on the Zoom screen share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion carries. All right, gentlemen.
Moving on to draft thirteen, I would make the motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that the footprint of the proposed project is indeed three thousand two hundred and seventy-five acres, such as the sum total of the participating parcels of the proposed repowered development, but presently, the existing wind farm directly impacts fifteen acres in Lee County, which, depending on the final WTG array selected, would be reduced by the proposed repower, thus returning.
Whoa.
Yeah, I'm leaving out, um, to a minimum of twelve acres and a maximum of fifteen. Okay, caught up to you. Uh, would be reduced by the proposed repower, thus returning one to three acres to probable agricultural production.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. Anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
No, just felt that the pertinent point there was the reduction of the one to three acres and the minimum maximum of the twelve to fifteen was, at this point, irrelevant, not knowing what the actual, um, array is going to be.
Okay, uh, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'm, I'm going to put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of motion, whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the footprint of the proposed project is indeed three thousand two hundred and seventy-five acres, such as the sum total of the participating parcels of the proposed repower development, but presently, the existing wind farm directly impacts thirteen acres in Lee County, which, depending on the final WTG array selected, would be reduced by the proposed repower, thus returning one to three acres to probable agricultural production.
One minor comment, and since you were just repeating it, this, when you were reading it, you said, uh, impacts thirteen acres, it's actually impacts fifteen acres.
Thank you.
Probably just a dustman in the glasses.
Apparently, I, I, I need to have an appointment with my optometrist. Okay, other, thank you. Do I? Oh, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. Okay, gents.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds the petitioner has indicated through the testimony of one of its agents that the lifespan of the proposed repowered WEX would be thirty years.
Do I hear a second? Second, got a second. Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has indicated through the, through the testimony of one of its agents that the lifespan of the proposed repowered WEX would be thirty years. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay. Have back at it, guys.
Your Honor, number fifteen, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that at the time of the petition was filed, the Lee County ordinance contained provisions specifically applicable to WEX developments, section ten dash one five dash one five, and certain other provisions, performance standards, section ten dash one five dash one, et cetera, and special exceptions, variations, and non-conforming uses, section ten dash two B dash one, et cetera, that also unless suspended by the newer WEX ordinance would be pertinent. Additionally, there was a formal, former iteration of the Lee County zoning, zoning ordinance governing WEX, which was in fact, when, in effect, when the existing development was permitted in two thousand and three, section H dash one five. That's my motion.
Got a second?
Second.
Got one. Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
Nope.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so accurately read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. That motion is allowed. And let me save here, I haven't saved in a while. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, moving on to the next one. The Lee County ZB, I move that Lee County ZBA notes that a WEX project such as what the developer proposes poses is permitted in this described Ag One District as a special use, subject to specifically specified regulations and design standards outlined herein, hereafter, here and after. The Lee County ZBA finds that its application in the testimony produced that the petitioner agreed to be bound by any and all proposals and representations made under oath at the public hearing before the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, which shall be considered supplementary conditions of the special use petition.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got one. Any thing you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No.
Any other board member wish to address this motion? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion is Mr. Burrow, so enlightened us and is displayed on the board here in the courtroom and on the Zoom chair screen. Adoption by the adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Oh, in the vernacular, okey-dokey.
Moving on to draft number seventeen, I would propose the motion, the Lee County Z B A finds that in its application, the petitioner submitted the following as part of its special or petition for special use. Property lines of the proposed site of construction and the proposed location of the wax project, including distances from property lines and any existing or occupied residence within two thousand six hundred and forty feet of the wax turbine and recognition of all non-residential structures located on the property where the wax is proposed and location of all above ground and underground utility lines within a radius equal to two times the height of the proposed wax turbine and dimensional representation of the structural components of the wax tower construction, including the base and the footings, and schematics of electrical systems associated with the wax turbine, including all existing and proposed electrical connections, and representative manufacturer specifications and installation and operations instructions or specific wax project design information.
Second.
Okay.
Got it. Anything, Mr. Hughes?
Nothing.
Any other board member?
I would like to say, I don't see how we can find that that's all been supplied and we don't even know what generators we have. How can we have all the exact schematics?
Any other board member?
Yeah, going back to that, they provided representative information, they provided based on the, the, um, the proposed tower, but then additionally indicated that if those changed, they would, um, provide the updated documentation to the zoning administrator.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put, uh, is whether the Lee County Z B A finds that in its application, the petitioner submitted the following as part of its petition for special use. The property lines of the proposed site of construction and the proposed location of the wax project, including distances from property lines and any existing or occupied residence within two thousand six hundred and forty feet of the, of the wax turbine and recognition of all non-residential structures located in the property where the wax is proposed and the location of all above ground and underground utility lines within a radius equal to two times the height of the proposed wax turbine and dimensional representation of the structural components of the wax tower construction, including the base and footings and schematics of electrical systems associated with the wax turbine, including all existing and proposed electrical connections and representative manufacturer specifications and installation and operation instructions or specific wax project design information. Adoption, that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. But not unanimously. Okay, guys, let's get a few more before break.
Your honor. Make a motion that the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner did not produce a certification by a registered professional engineer that the wax tower's design is sufficient to withstand wind load requirements for structure as defined by the International Code Council, I C C, in its application, but did state that the new turbine foundation would be designed with sufficient structure load and fatigue capacity to accommodate the turbines proposed and that a professional engineer's certification would be provided prior to the issuance of bill increments.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got the second. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so awfully read by Mr. Pratt and is displayed here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share screen. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is allowed. Okay, okey, okey dokey.
Okay, uh, number eighteen, your honor, or number nineteen, your honor. My motion reads, Lee County Z B A finds that in its application, the petitioner identified the location of all access roads required for the wax project and also stated that those roads would not be paved, but would be widened to sixteen feet with an additional thirty feet total feet of native compacted ground shoulders during construction and would have modified subgrade aggregate surfacing, existing culverts and transitions.
I hear a second. Got one. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Meyer?
Yes, sir.
Any other board members? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption of the motion requires vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. All right. Handoff.
Mr. Chairman, on point twenty, I move that the Lee County C B A finds that in its application, that the petitioner through its application and the testimony received indicated, indicated those same access roads would be used for crane pads and temporary compacted paths, perhaps mitigated by crane mats, may be needed for turbines that do not have an access road between them.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got one. Um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Borough? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as just read by Mr. Borough. Well done and displayed on the screen or the screen in the courtroom and on the Zoom screen share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
About anybody opposed? Nay. All right, another one bites the dust.
Next motion being, the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner included in its application a topographic map of the proposed site of construction.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? All right, um, hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County Z B A finds that the petitioner included in its application a topographic map of the proposed site of construction. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion's allowed. Okay.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, the Lee County C B A finds that in its application, the petitioner confirmed that it would not commence construction activity associated with the wax project before six A M nor continue it past nine P M on any day of the week within one quarter mile of any non-participating landowner unless a waiver is obtained from such landowner.
I hear a second.
Second.
Got a couple of them. Um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County Z B A finds that in its application, the petitioner confirmed that it would not commence construction activity associated with the wax project before six A M nor continue it past nine P M on any day of the week within one quarter mile of any, of any non-participating landowner unless a waiver is obtained from such landowner. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. In the silence of the second question, that motion is adopted. Yes, guys.
Your honor, number twenty-three, my motion reads, the Lee County Z B A notes that verification of any power purchase contracts is now the province of the Lee County zoning officer.
May I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, whether the Lee County Z B A notes verification of any power purchase contract is now the province of the Lee County zoning officer. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That one's allowed as well. Yes, yes, yes. Moving on up.
Chairman, on point twenty-four, I move that the Lee County Z B A notes that the requirement that the petitioner provide a certificate of design demonstrating that the equipment has passed muster with an appropriate independent or industry-specific science or technical safety is now the province of the Lee County zoning officer, and as to the use of the new equipment, see the findings following.
I hear a second.
Second.
Got it. Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Borough? Oh, that sounded all right. Any other board member? All right, seeing none, hearing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County Z B A notes that the equipment that the petition, that the requirement that the petitioner provide a certificate of design demonstrating that the equipment has passed muster with an appropriate independent or industry-specific science or technical safety is now the province of the Lee County zoning officer, and as to the use of new equipment, see the findings following. Uh, adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is allowed. Okay.
Moving on, I would make the motion, the Lee County Z B A finds that based on its application, the petitioner confirmed that all wax proposed turbine models for the proposed project would be equipped with a redundant braking system. This, it averred, would include both aerodynamic over speed controls containing variable pitch systems and mechanical brakes, which would be operated in a fail-safe mode.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
No.
Um, any other board member? I will then put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as just enunciated by Mr. Hughes and displayed in the courtroom on the board and on the Zoom screen share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
By nay. The motion is allowed. I don't know why I started allowed. I usually put adopted. I gotta go. Well.
I saw that change, but it didn't bother me. Figured you just needed to change the language.
I don't know. Um, next.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
To make a motion, the Lee County Z B A finds that in its application and through the testimony received, that the petitioner stated that the proposed project would be designed and subsequently follow the codes and standards of the National Electrical Safety Code and the National Electric Code and the National Fire Protection Agency and the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, O S H A, and the American Society of Testing and Materials and the Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineers and the International Electro-Technical Commission and the American Society of Civil Engineers and the American Concrete Institute and the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the National Electrical Testing Association and Underwriters Laboratories and P J M Interconnection.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Borough? Uh, Mr. Pratt, I'm sorry. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion is very clearly read by Mr. Pratt, displayed here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share screen. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is carried. I don't know about you, gentlemen, but I think is enough is enough and, and, and one of the reasons is this, we're, we're on, in terms of number of pages on the display, on the possible motions displayed, we're one third of the way through. About twenty after recess.
Somebody you guys explain how you do that.
Are Wells, Courtney? So it's just three? I got Mount, Wells, and Courtney. Got it. Good enough. So. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[738.45]
That the petitioner, through its application and testimony, the confirmed that all wax turbines would be painted white or gray or another non-reflective, unobtrusive color.
Here a second.
Sorry.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes, in your own motion?
Just a clarification, the second, the at the beginning of the second line, the petitioner. These, that should be removed.
Got it.
It's redundant.
Yep, sure is. Okay.
Petitioner as well, the petitioner.
Oh, yeah. Now does it look right? Well, just a minute. There.
Almost. You forgot to make the R.
Oh. Now we're getting to that. Now does it look right?
Yes, sir.
Let's see, it's your motion. Do I hear a second? I'm sorry, I forgot.
Sorry.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Hughes, other than the grammatical correction?
No, I don't think so.
Any other board member? All those, adoption of the motion as read and corrected by Mr. Hughes, displayed on the screen here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share, requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say nay. Despite the grammatical errors, it is still allowed. Okay.
I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner, through its application, the petitioner stated that a filing with the Federal Aviation Administration was in progress and in compliance with pertinent provisions of the Illinois Administrative Code regarding aviation safety would locate the turbines to be instructed.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt? Any other board member? All right, I will put the question. The question being put is adoption of the motion as I've grammatically corrected it and which I feel I have the ability to do without changing any substance. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The motion is allowed. Oops. Save before I put them. Okay, now we're set.
Your Honor, number thirty-one, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner, through its application, promised to display adequate warning signs on the base of all pad-mounted transformers in substations as required.
Here a second.
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Right, hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner, through its application, promised to display adequate warning signs on the base of all pad-mounted transformers and substations as required. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say now or forever hold your peace. Motion is allowed. Moving on up. Back to you.
Chairman, the next one, number thirty-two, would read, I move that Lee County ZBA finds that petitioner, through its application, stated that by design, no wax towers would be climbable from the exterior of the structure.
We hear a second.
Okay.
Got one. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow, about your own motion?
No.
But any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner, through its application, stated that by design, no wax towers would be climbable from the exterior of the structure. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay, we'll keep going.
Moving on, the motion being, the Lee County zoning, Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner, through its application and testimony produced, did not describe or show the setbacks due to the petitioner's then-present inability to specifically determine exact turbine models and therefore locations, but such showing appears not to be required by the ordinance at the ZBA hearing stage, but confirmed that unless waived by an affected landowner, it would conform to all ordinance-required setbacks and stated that in its building permit application, it would provide a final site plan that would define WTG locations, presumably along with showing setback conformity.
All right, do I hear a second?
Sorry.
Got a second. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Hughes?
I don't believe so.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Hughes, displayed here on the monitor in the courtroom and on the Zoom screen share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's allowed.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony received, the petitioner affirmed that the IDNR recommended the following setbacks, five hundred feet from any perennial streams with a non-forested riparian zone and one thousand feet from all forested areas, and confirmed that all turbine locations met the above two recommended setbacks, except one, which is within three hundred and thirty-four feet from a perennial stream, and that it will take action to reposition that particular WTG.
We hear a second.
Second.
I do see a spelling mistake.
Burrow.
You have perennial steam.
Thank you. Okay, I got a second. Anything you want to say besides the ongoing grammatical corrections?
No, no comment.
Any other board member?
Yeah, would add to the ongoing grammatical corrections, affirmed that the, not that that. First line of the bullet points.
First. Before IDNR.
Yeah.
Oh.
Mr. Pratt read it correctly. He changed.
I'm sure he did. All right, now I'm gonna, now, 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 now I'm gonna tell you that would anybody like to guess? We're gonna change the subject. Which university's baseball team is in the College World Series? Would anybody care to guess? You'd be right if you said the Fighting Irish. You'd be correct. And it doesn't include Illinois or Iowa, Wisconsin.
Number one, you still need to change that, affirm that the.
Well, what can't it read? Affirm that the IDNR recommended the following setback?
That the IDNR. You got, you just crossed out the that.
Affirmed.
I suppose you could just say that IDNR recommended, okay. But we haven't voted on it yet, have we?
No. No, I was waiting for the, the, the comments about my change of subject, but apparently those aren't forthcoming. So I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as it's been so grammatically corrected as follows, the Lee County ZBA finds that, through its application and the testimony received, the petitioner affirmed that IDNR recommended the following setbacks, five hundred feet from any perennial stream, any perennial streams with a non-forested riparian zone and one thousand feet from all forested areas, and confirmed that all turbine locations meet, would meet the above two recommended setbacks, except one, which is within three hundred and thirty-four feet from a perennial stream, and that it will take action to reposition that particular tub WTG. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. All right, number thirty-three.
Your Honor, number thirty-five, my motion reads.
Thirty-five.
The Lee County ZBA notes that while now, under the updated ordinance, the execution of any required and acceptable road use agreement is a function of the issuance of building permit. The petitioner, in its application, indicated that some road intersections may need to be widened to facilitate turbine delivery, but the same would be part of any such road use agreement.
Aye. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? All right, hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as ably read by Mr. Meyer. I was checking something, make sure the grammar was right. Adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer, displayed on the screen here in the courtroom and on the Zoom screen share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say nay. Nay. Moving on up. What didn't I change?
Did change from allowed to adapted.
Oh. Well, I, I'm just waiting with bated breath for somebody to say, congratulations to all Notre Dame alumni whose team is in the College World Series. I haven't heard it yet, so.
Where are they playing at?
Omaha. They always play in Omaha. Yeah. I think we're gonna have to continue this till July so I can go. All right.
Point thirty-six.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Lee County ZBA finds that through its application, the petitioner confirmed that it would repair any and all field tiles damaged by the wax project construction and maintenance activities within ten working days, the date of recep, the date of receipt of notification, and it would also repair damage to other drainage facilities, including, but not necessarily limited to, waterways and drainage ditches as soon as possible, reasonably possible, but in any event, within six months of the date of receipt or notification.
We hear a second.
Second.
Got the second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as well read by Mr. Burrow, displayed here on the screen in the courtroom and on the Zoom screen share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is. Okay, guys.
Next motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application, the petitioner confirmed that it would utilize established and accepted engineering best management practices to manage salt, stormwater, siltation, and erosion during construction.
All right, do I hear a second?
Sorry.
Adoption of the motion, gee. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? All right, now I'll put the question. The question being put is whether, on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Hughes, displayed here in the courtroom on the monitor and on the Zoom screen share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. That's a winner, too.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony produced, petitioner stated that it had submitted and executed AMA to the Illinois Department of Agriculture, including an amendment thereto.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Pratt, displayed on the monitor here in the courtroom and on the Zoom screen share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. All those in favor indicate by saying, go Irish.
Go Irish.
So by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's allowed. Punchy. All right, guys.
Number thirty-nine, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
My motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony produced, that the petitioner confirmed that it was considering an energetic method, a euphemism for the use of explosive devices to topple and decommission the existing WTGs, and it would not conduct any blasting in connection with the construction of the wax project unless it had provided prior notification to the property owner, any abutting property owners, property owners within one thousand five hundred feet of the blasting site, officials of the township in which the blasting is to occur, and the Lee County zoning administrator, and that any such blasting shall be done in accordance with all applicable state and federal laws and regulations.
We hear a second. Second. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well read by Mr. Meyer, displayed here on the monitor in the courtroom and on the Zoom share. Although, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay, whoops, make that red. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on number forty, I move that Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has already commissioned and submitted a wildlife assessment, parentheses, impact study, conducted by a qualified wildlife expert from Stan Tech to the Lee County zoning office. Included therein is a conclusion that the proposed project site consists of ninety-five point one percent cultivated crops and four point six percent buried intensity development and one-tenth of a percent woodlands and twenty-two point nine acres of national wetlands inventory, which, that experts testified, he determined that after a certain site survey is really only one point four acres.
Second.
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, displayed here in the courtroom, on the monitor and on the Zoom share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, guys.
Motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony produced, the petitioner or its agent initiated an IDNR ECOCAT review for the proposed developments sites on September ninth, twenty twenty, and as a consequence, in a consultation letter of December fourth, twenty twenty, IDNR provided information about the federal and state threatened Indiana and northern long-eared bats for which there is no suitable summer habitat within the proposed project area, but for which there may be some level of fall activity, and the federal and state-listed rusty patched bumblebee, the eastern prairie fringed orchid, the prairie bush clover, and the decurrent false aster, and the state-listed northern harrier, and initiated an in-person consultation with the staff of the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, USFWS, on February two, twenty twenty-one, is conducting an ongoing avian survey, which has noted four sightings of the northern harrier and one sighting of a bald eagle's nest approximately one-quarter mile from the proposed project area boundary. That's the motion.
We hear a second.
Sorry.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
No, I think I said sufficient.
The other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion and so ably read by Mr. Hughes, displayed here in the courtroom, on the monitor and on the Zoom share screen. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Questions allowed. Okay.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that the USFWS did not recommend any permits under the Endangered Species or Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Acts. And in its consultation letter, IDNR recommended a continuing bird and bat strategy that included WTG curtailment as an appropriate mitigation for the noted bats and bird. But Leeward, instead of a cut-in speed of five point oh meters per second from July fifteenth to October fifteenth each year, wants to lower it to four point oh meters per second, which it, which its expert said is a statistical data overlap of mortality.
We hear a second.
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well read by Mr. Pratt, displayed on the monitor here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share screen. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. By name. Motion is allowed.
Okay. Your Honor, number forty-three, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that Leeward's expert testified that any threat would be only to direct loss of habitat and very unlikely, because the only direct impact would be to the thirteen to sixteen acres actually used by the WTG sighting, some of which is already being used and the remainder of which was and most assuredly will be returned to agricultural use, which is incompatible with any of those four species.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got two of them. Uh, let's see, Mr. Meyer, you want to make sure I, I mean, did I change the numerals according to what you said?
That's what I said.
Good. Anything you want to say about your motion other than that, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member?
Yeah, actually, I believe those numbers should be twelve to fifteen, because the current use, current usage is only fifteen acres right now. I think there's probably just, there was, that was probably just a shift in the a typographical error. I think it should be twelve to fifteen on that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, how's it look now?
Sure.
Yep. Any other board member want to make any comment about the motion? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, but since we've changed something substantive, I will read it. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that Leeward's expert testified that any threat would only be to direct loss of habitat and is very unlikely, because the only direct impact would be to the twelve to thirteen, fifteen acres actually used by WTG sighting, some of which is already being used and the remainder of which was and most assuredly will be returned to agricultural use, which is incompatible with any of those four species. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, anyone? Say nay. And we have left off. All right, moving on.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On number forty-four reads, I move that Lee County ZBA finds that in its consultation letter, the IDNR noted the ornate box turtle, but the petitioner's expert determined from a desktop review that no mapped sandy soils suitable for its habitat are present within or adjacent to the proposed project area, and IDNR acknowledged that it does not appear that the preferred habitat for the turtle occurs in the project area.
We hear a second.
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir, just good to note the discussing ornate box turtle, which is popular with us in the county.
Any other board member want to make a comment? All right. I will then put the question. The question being put is whether on the adoption of the motion as so is read by Mr. Burrow, displayed on the monitor here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. All right, guys.
Next motion being, the Lee County ZBA also finds that the petitioner stated that it would comply with the United States Endangered Species Act and the Illinois Endangered Species Protection Act and the United States Migratory Bird Treaty Act and the United States Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a couple of them. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
Oh, I think it's sufficient.
Okay, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Hughes, displayed here in the courtroom, on the monitor and on the Zoom screen share. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. D has a sticky D on her keyboard. All right.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner stated it would operate the wax project without risk of fire, offensive noise, vibration, dust, smoke, odor, glare, explosion.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
Sure.
Any other board member? Yep, hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner stated it would operate the wax project without risk of fire, offensive noise, vibration, dust, smoke, odor, glare, or explosion. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Loud. Okay. Back at you.
Your honor, number forty-seven, my motion reads, Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony it produced, the petitioner commissioned comm search to perform an assessment to identify any potential impacts in the proposed project area to emergency services communications, and such assessment determined that the WTGs would have little to no effect on emergency service providers. But there, there was no indication that the petitioner proved copies of any project summary and site plan to the applicable microwave, microwaveable transmission and local emergency service providers.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, as so well read by Mr. Meyer, displayed here on the screen in the courtroom and on the Zoom share, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote's going to be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The motion is allowed. All right, guys. No reason to stop now.
Chairman, on point forty-eight, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that there was no indication the petitioner submitted a copy of the site plan to the local fire protection districts. But, and there was, um, indication the petitioner would develop a health and safety plan and hold meetings in coordination with Lee County Emergency Manager and local police and fire protection ambulance operators and nine one one dispatch.
At your fault, I fell a little behind, so, um, better check me out on my alternatives. I think I got it right, but that doesn't, what I think doesn't matter. What you think matters. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
I think we're correct.
Any other board member? I'm sorry. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put, and I'm going to read it again because I just want to make sure. The question being put is whether Lee County ZBA finds that there was no indication that the petitioner submitted a copy of the site plan to the local fire protection districts, but there was an indication that the petitioner would develop a health and safety plan and hold hearings in coordination with Lee County Emergency Managers and local police, fire protection, ambulance operators, and nine one one dispatch authorities. Adoption of this motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is allowed. And we'll save it and we'll go onward.
And my motion is, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony it produced, the petitioner stated that as to solid waste, dumpsters would be used during construction for materials of appropriate size, which would be hauled away by local waste management or recycling company to appropriate facilities for disposal, and if too large, materials would be handled directly to an appropriate facility. As to hazardous waste, it will be using lubricants, oils, and greases for the proposed site, and whatever inventory there is of the same will be stored at the O and M facility, and PA spill prevention control and countermeasures plan will be maintained.
We hear a second.
Sorry.
Got it. Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Hughes, displayed here in the courtroom on the Zooms, or here in the courtroom on the monitor and on the Zoom share screen. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. That's one in the win column. Okay, guys.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony it produced, the petitioner already commissioned Burns and McDonald to perform a modeling study presenting a conservative number of hours shadow flicker may appear on a primary structure of a non-participating property owner. And there is some, and the summary result of that study was that there were five hundred and twelve possible receptors in both Lee County. Let's do it with both.
Yep.
In Lee County that could be affected by the GE three point four one forty alternative, alternative WTG model on any of the possible primary structures. And that conservatively of those receptors, ten of them could receive between ten and thirty hours of annual shadow flicker. And one receptor may receive more than thirty hours annual, thirty annual hours of shadow flicker. And stated that the landowner of the exceedance primary structure would be enter, entering into a waiver agreement as consent to the exceedance and to use mitigation techniques to reduce the effects of any shadow flicker. But did not address the need to program a shadow flicker specific period to shut down any WTG causing the thirty annual hours of shadow flicker exceedance.
We hear a second.
Second.
Uh, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
Uh, this is me, I'm Mr. Meyer, but that's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm good. I'm good.
Uh, the last bullet point down at the bottom, did not address the need to program a shadow flicker period. I, I'm not confident on that decision. I need help from the rest.
I believe they did address the possible options of reducing the shadow flicker. They talked about, um, shutting down turbines during certain periods of the, the year or other, um, other options for reducing such as putting in, um, visual screens, um, some other things. So I believe they did address the need to program a shadow flicker specific period shutdown.
I, I, I can't, I can't recall. To me, that statement says that they would have a program to shut down every day at a certain time. Now, I don't know whether they actually said that.
They talked about, a, a program is an, is an odd word in there. Um, but they did address, um, the options for reducing or negating the shadow flicker. So whether you're good with program or not, I think, I think they did address it.
Well, that's fine. I can live with did. I'd say I'm not confident either way. So if you're more confident, I'd like to change that motion to did instead of not, did not.
Any other board member? All right. Um, I will, uh, put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony it produced, the petitioner already commissioned Burns and McCall to perform a modeling study for, um, presenting a conservative number of hours of shadow flicker may appear on a primary construction of a non-participating property owner. And the summary result of that study was that there were five hundred and twelve possible receptors in Lee County that could be affected by the GE three point four dash one forty alternative WTG model on any of the possible primary structures and that conservatively of those receptors, ten of them could receive between ten and thirty hours of annual shadow flicker, and one receptor may receive more than thirty hours of annual shadow flicker. And stated that the landowner of the exceedance primary structure would be entering into a waiver agreement as consent to the exceedance and to use mitigating, mitigation techniques to reduce the effects of any shadow flicker. And did address the need to program a shadow flicker specific period shut down any, uh, to, to shut, to shut down, to shut down any WTG causing the thirty annual hours of shadow flicker exceedance. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion was allowed. Hey, guys.
Your honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and the testimony it produced, the petitioner confirmed that it would use minimal lighting on proposed WEX project and that any lighting would be shielded and downcast, and there would be no tower lighting except the best available technology allowed by the FAA.
We hear a second.
Second.
Hearing a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, uh, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
The other board, board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, as read by Mr. Meyer, displayed on the monitor here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share screen. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That one is winner. Next.
On due number fifty-two, Chairman, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application, the petitioner confirmed that it would minimize to the maximum practical extent possible the impact of any stray voltage caused by the operation of the WEX repower project.
Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Any other thing you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, as well read by Mr. Burrow, displayed on the screen here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. That one is allowed as well. Okay, guys.
Um, my next motion being, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application, petitioner confirmed that it would not allow any advertising and or signage other than warning, equipment identification, or ownership information on the WEX project.
Second.
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Any other board member? I will then put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, as read by Mr. Hughes, displayed on the screen here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Another one bites the dust.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application, the petitioner averred that little water would be used during this proposed repowering. And what water that will be used will be hauled in by truck and stored in onsite tanks. And sanitary wastewater would be collected in portable facilities all the way by a license holder to permitted treatment facility. And as to contamination, see preceding findings.
We hear a second.
Second.
Uh, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, so heavily read by Mr. Pratt, displayed here on the screen in the courtroom and on the Zoom share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay.
Back to you. Your honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application and testimony produce, it produced, the petitioner commissioned a third-party qualified professional, Burns and McDonald, the name and qualification as whom were submitted to the Lee County zoning administrator to conduct an appropriate analysis of the noise impact to nearby proposed project properties during the operation of the proposed repowered wind farm. And based on conservative assumptions of a preliminary WTG model and layout, once noise reduction operations were included, there were no ICPB noise limit exceedances across all active bands during day or nighttime hours.
We hear a second.
Second.
Uh, anything you want to say, um, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, as just read by Mr. Meyer, displayed on the, on the monitor here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share screen. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Chair declares that unanimous, and we move on. Whoops. Okay, guys, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on point fifty-six, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that if, finds that if allowed as to noise levels during WTG decommissioning by the use of the energetic method, there was evidence that the detonation of the targeted charge would be momentarily fourteen hundred decibels dB at one thousand feet, which level would be similar to fireworks going off.
All right, second. All right, do I hear a? Um, do you think, I forgot who made the motion.
No, sir.
Mr. Burrow, um, any other board member? I'm wondering about that fourteen hundred. Of course, it always depends what kind of fireworks you're talking about. Firecracker and there's a
Oh, that is one too many zeros. I thought it looked right, but it's, it's not.
It looked wrong when I looked. It looked wrong when I looked at it, and then I
It's fine with the motion.
Good. All right. Um, forgot where I was. Any other board member want to address the motion? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is, however, the Lee County ZBA finds that if allowed as to noise levels during WTG decommissioning by the use of the energetic method, there was evidence that the detonation of the targeted charge would be momentarily one hundred forty dB at one thousand feet, which level would be similar to fireworks going off. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is in today's vernacular allowed. Never know what next week's vernacular can be. All right. Uh, moving on, the next motion to be, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its application, the
The Lee County's E B A finds that through its application, petitioner promised to maintain. A broad form comprehensive coverage policy of public liability insurance. Ensuring it, project parcel owners and participating parcel owners. Against loss or liability caused by the applicant's occupation and use of the property. Under the lease in the amounts of. Not less than five million dollars of combined single limit liability coverage. Per occurrence, accident or incident and with a ten million dollar aggregate. And with a deductible of no more than twenty-five thousand. Yeah. We have a.
You have a fat fingered type, is that?
Yes, twenty-five thousand dollars. And naming Lee County as additional insured on said policy. Along with its subcontractor statutorily mandated workers' compensation coverage and. Employers liability insurance. And. The petitioner. Did. Excuse me. Did not provide. Certificates of insurance to the zoning board of appeals. And I suppose that should be, but petitioner did not.
Take a look.
Yes.
Um, do I hear a second? Uh, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Hughes? No. Any other board member?
Yes, Judge, I know it's late, but I can't live with promise.
Oh, that's right. You know what? I, I hide him for you to see how sharp your.
It's up on the first line.
Yeah, I know.
Stated that it will maintain.
Alright with you, Mr. Um. Hughes in his ongoing crusade.
Um, it, it will.
Uh, correct it.
Yep.
Okay. Alright with you as the movement?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna send you a copy of Don Quixote.
Tilted at windmills.
Building at windmills. Um, I'm, I'm sorry. Um. Any other board member besides Mr. Pratt? Comment? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion is. Um, read by Mr. Hughes and uh corrected to his vernacular by uh Mr. Pratt. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye. Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. Okay, guys, page twenty-five on.
Your, your honor. I make a motion, the Lee County's E B A notes that there are two decommissionings involved in this project. The decommissioning of the existing wind farm and the future decommissioning of the proposed repower project.
We hear a second.
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No comment.
Any other board member? Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. Vote will be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay. That was. It, it may sound silly, but our readers got to understand what we're talking about decommissions.
Alright, your, our next. Number fifty-nine.
Yep.
My motion reads as to the possible future decommissioning, the Lee County's E B A finds. That through its application and testimony it produced, the petitioner provided a decommissioning plan. Along with cost estimates in its application. And the acceptability of the same is now the province of the Lee, of the county zoning administrator and the county engineer.
Well, here's a second.
Second.
Got a second, um. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other more board, board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion is, is uh. Read by Mr. Meyer, displayed on the screen here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote's going to be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed by nay. Alright.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The next one sixty, I move as to the decommissioning of the existing project, the Lee County's E B A finds. That the S U P special use petition portion of Lee County ordinance governing wax in effect at the time. Present operating wind farm was permitted, which rather minimalistic in nature. And that at the time, the issuance of the S U P under which the present wind farm is operating. G S G wind did not offer a decommissioning plan for approval. Nor were there even any decommissioning provisions or regulations. But the applicant through the testimony of one of its agents indicated there are three methodologies available to take down the existing W T Gs. And have advantages and disadvantages as follows. The reverse build or deconstruction method is essentially taking apart the W T G in reverse order of its construction. It involves the use of cranes and manpower on the W T G structure going from. Top down with the following relative detriments. Is the least safe for personnel do- doing the work and has the greatest negative impact on land surrounding the W T G. As it involves heavy equipment constantly traversing and compacting paths to the W T G. Takes the longest period of time, is the most expenses, expensive. Carries an A M A obligation to thoroughly return the affected land to its pre-wax condition. The tilt fell method by which a cut, not unlike the felling of a tree parentheses, is made at the base of the W T G. And through the use of cabling attached to heavy equipment, the W T G is lowered to the ground in a controlled fashion. And is taken apart once laid down with the relative, following relative benefits and detriments. Has some personal safety issues as workers would necessarily be on the W T G to attach the cable. It will be in the vicinity as the W T G is lowered. As impact to land as heavy equipment to which the cabling is attached, packs of soil along its path. Carries an A M A obligation to thoroughly return the affected land to its pre-wax condition after the subsequent. Prone decon- deconstruction. The energetic. Uh, method by which a target explosive charge is placed at the base of the W T G. And once the area is cleared, detonated, and the W T Gs fall to the ground in the direction computed by an explosives expert. With the following risks and benefits. Is the fastest start to finish deconstruction, is the safest method for personnel. Is the least negative impact. It's the negative, least negative land impact method. May cause fiberglass splintering of the blades on impact. Carries an A M A obligation to thoroughly return the affected land to its pre-wax condition after the subsequent prone deconstruction.
Alright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got the second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
Uh, just one typo on the energetic method paragraph down there, the second W T G is a capital S.
I got it already.
Any, any other board member?
Um. I'm not. I'm not completely confident I agree on the tilt fell method. That it's lowered to the ground. I know that it is attached, has a cabling attached to it to handle the or. Um, maintain the direction of. Fall, but I don't believe. That it's lowered to the ground in a controlled fashion.
And any other board member?
I think Glenn's correct on that. I, I think the cable just causes it to fall in a certain direction, but it falls same as the, the other, nothing.
That's a good point.
I'll take those. Correct.
Well. Good call.
I think we're gonna have to change some of the wording there.
About to fall to the ground? In a controlled fashion?
I don't think it's. Other, other than controlling the direction, I wouldn't.
Wasn't that controlled fashion? I, I, I should.
Yeah, I'm, I.
I know.
I have no problem with, with assistance on the semantics, I'm just.
I would suggest saying the W T G falls to the ground in a controlled fashion. Instead of lowered. Cause I don't think it's actually lowered.
I'll, I'll accept, I mean, I, I think that's. But.
More importantly, is it okay with you, Mr. Burrow?
Yes, that's, that's what I was thinking too.
Alright, Mr. Burrow's that look right?
Yes.
Sure Hughes, as long as you're a part of this, I look great to you.
Yeah, it's accepted, it's acceptable.
Alright, um, any other board member would wish to address this? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion is. Read. And now displayed on the screen, I'm not gonna read it all, but I am going to read. One clause, which is the tilt fell method by which a cut. Not unlike the felling of a tree is made at the base of the W T G. And through the use of cabling attached to heavy equipment, the W T G. Falls to the ground in a controlled fashion and is taken apart once laid down. With the following relative benefits and detriments. Adoption of the motion is a, um. Required by a majority, vote, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
By nay. That motion is allowed.
Oh, how about one more, just to say we.
Sure.
The next motion being, the Lee County's E B A finds that in its application. The petitioner stated it will defend, indemnify and hold harmless Lee County. And their officials from and against any and all claims, demands, losses, lawsuits. Causes of action, damages, injuries, costs, expenses. And liabilities whatsoever, including but not limited to. Reasonable attorney's fees arising out of the acts or omissions of the applicant. Concerning the operations of the wax project without limitation. Whether said liability is permissed upon either contract or tort actions. Or other related claimed legal theory. I think that was premised, not permissed.
Premise, yeah. Um, is, do I hear a second?
Sorry.
Uh, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Hughes?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being. Put is on the adoption of the motion is read by Mr. Hughes, displayed on the monitor here in the courtroom and on the Zoom share screen. Excuse me, adoption of the motion. Requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted and. Unless you gents want to just. Keep going on, I. And I, I sense that everybody's had enough and the time limit's been reached. So, um, one thing I forgot to note is that, um. For the record, there were four people on Zoom, one of them a petitioner's represented, representative, excuse me, and three. Interested parties. Um, and correct me, please, everybody, if I'm wrong. On, on my notes, I have the next available proposed date. As being the twenty-seventh of June. So that's about eleven days from now. Does that sound right?
What I've got.
Primarily Ms. Ms. Duffy. Is that right? Okay. See everybody, uh, be Monday, June twenty-seventh. At seven o'clock, right? Summertime is summertime, 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 summertime. Um, we'll see then, have a good, I hope it cools off for everybody, we get some rain and, and um. Have a good remainder, mostly remainder of June.